You may get a, are you okay to participate in the recording? But it, the recording is started.
We lost Judy.
Maybe she didn't consent for the recording.
I just see, can you guys hear me again?
Yeah.
I see a thing and a live icon in the upper left corner.
I got that.
But I wasn't prompted to do anything.
Yeah, it's, we are recording, we are live now. And I'll check on Judy.
Okay. Okay, just so you guys know, you guys are coming up just a little bit choppy to me, but I don't know if everyone's going through that or not.
I'm, I'm good here.
You know, of course it worked perfectly for the test, but yeah.
I know Brian has been encouraging us to always leave our mics off if we're not presenting or talking. I think that helps with background noise.
Okay, that's coming across a little bit better.
Are you able to see the board agenda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I can see the agenda.
Good, thank you.
Are we ready to roll?
I would say.
Let's do this thing.
All right.
Light the fire.
Calling to order the April 13th Shakopee Public Schools Work Session. As everyone is aware, we are doing our first teleconference board meeting this evening. And with State Statute 13D 0.21, which allows us to have our board meetings until further notice with a teleconference. Sarah, could you call the roll, please?
Aldrich?
Here.
Brophy?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
McKeon? Matt?
Here.
Thank you. Judy, which I think she'll come back online. I mean, Tomzick, I apologize. Tucker?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
There you are.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic
and to the republic
for which I am. One nation, under God,
one nation
indivisible,
under God
and just for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we get into our agenda this evening and the approval of our agenda, I would just like to take a moment to reflect on a couple of contributions that a couple of community members that recently passed away. Fred Girowitz, I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with Fred or know of Fred. He passed away last week, and I just want to recognize him tonight. He has spent countless hours of work with many organizations here in Shakopee to benefit students in our city. He was very heavily involved in Dollars for Scholars, was on the board for that organization for many years. He was involved in art adventures programs in our elementary schools and many, many other programs. He was also involved as a referee in almost every sport for many years as well, working with, with the student athletes, not only just in Shakopee, but surrounding communities. Even though he wasn't a graduate from Shakopee High School, he was inducted into the Shakopee Hall of Fame, Alumni Hall of Fame in 2013. So I just want to recognize Fred tonight for everything that he did for the district and for us to remember his family during this tough time. And the other person that I would like to recognize tonight is Jen Eckers. I know that she meant a lot to a lot of people within Shakopee, was involved in a lot of her kids' sporting events, as well as organizations that they participated in. And one thing that I've heard about her was her positive attitude and how infectious she was and everyone that she touched. So I just want to take a moment to, for you to silently share personal reflections for these two individuals who were, again, very strong contributors to our school district. Thank you. So tonight we have a little bit shorter of agenda. Again, we're trying to keep this to a shorter meeting since we're teleconferencing, but making sure that we cover all of the pertinent topics that we need to as a board. Are there any changes that you would like to recognize with the agenda for tonight?
No.
If there are none, I would like to have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Don't move.
Joe?
Second.
Angela, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Are we doing a
Oh, we have to do a roll call, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
Something new. Let's do a roll call.
So I have the motion and a second, Aldrich and Tucker. And then here comes the roll call, how's that? Aldrich?
Okay.
Yes.
Brophy?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yeah.
Tomzick?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yep. If I could interrupt for a minute, this is Judy. I can't get onto the meeting except I'm on the phone now.
Okay.
It wouldn't accept me back in.
Okay. Moving on to item number five, which is our public comment section. With this being a teleconference school board meeting this evening, we accepted comments at schoolboardcomment@shakopee.k12.mn.us email address, which was part of our agenda and posted on the website, school website. Comments had to be received by 5 o'clock tonight in order for them to be read during our meeting. We received no comments for tonight, so we are going to move on from our public comment section and move into our consent items. We have a few items under consent with the Apple iPad lease, the YMCA School Age Care Agreement, and the Head Start Lease Agreement for the 2020-2021 school year. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Paul?
Second.
Matt, a second. Any further discussion on those topics under consent agenda?
Chris, the other question I would presume is having to do with 6.1, the iPad renewal, that that's consistent with the budget and those things that we've already discussed. This is just approving as planned, correct?
Correct.
And just a quick question on 6.3. What are we leasing with Head Start?
Mike, do you have further information you could share with us on that?
Yeah, we've leased a classroom at CFC to them for a number of years where they run programming that's similar to some of the programming we run. They're going to lease a room at Pearson for next year. And then we've, we've had conversations with them and told them there's a decent likelihood that we may not have space at Pearson after next school year. So this could be the last year that we, coming up, the 2021 school year could potentially be the last year that we do this. But I've spoken with Julie Ritter, and yep, she's planning on having them there. We've got the space. We haven't worked on all the details, but we typically rent them a classroom and then a little bit of office space and then allow them.
Okay, and would we be able to revert them back to Central or?
I don't know that yet, just, just as far as processing through next year.
Okay.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Seeing none, we will take the roll call for the approval of the consent agenda.
Aldrich?
Yes.
Brophy?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Tomzick?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yep.
Thank you.
Great.
Hey, Chris, before we move on, Sarah, I just got a text from somebody who's, who's trying to join the stream and it says that it's not, not a public meeting.
We will be posting the recorded version of tonight's meeting as soon as possible, so
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I apologize that that person isn't able to access right now.
Okay.
But we will be posting a recorded copy of this shortly.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And Sarah, could I also ask you if there could be anything that could be done so I could visually join the meeting?
Absolutely, I'll check on it Judy. You could go to that main public link, but I'll also double check another way too.
Okay. All right. So we are going to move to item seven, which is the business section of our meeting tonight. And our first item under there is 7.1, which is a presentation that will include information on our equity comprehensive needs assessment, progress to date, and the next steps with our equity planning. Tonight we have Sebastian Witherstuen, the Executive Director of Equity Alliance, Ray Betten, the Shakopee Quality, or Equity Supervisor, and Nancy Tool, the Director of Teaching and Learning that will be presenting tonight. Go ahead.
Well, first I just want to say it's quite a distinction to try to do this for the first time as a teleconference, so. But we're super excited to really have a chance to talk to you about what is sort of the findings of the report, what the recommendations are, what Ray and I have been working kind of on and so far, and then talk about some of those next steps. And so how we're going to start tonight is Sebastian's really going to walk us through sort of the highlights of the report, and then Ray will really focus on sort of work or progress to date, and then we'll kind of go back to Sebastian to talk about some potential next steps. So I'm gonna, oh, wait, that's right, Ray's got a little intro first, so we'll turn it over to Ray now.
That's right. So the, so the last time we, we got together, we had talked about, you know, doing this CNA and what, you know, all the different parts of the CNA, which we'll go through today. But, you know, again, like Nancy was saying, tonight, we're just going to give you a quick review of the results and some of its recommendations from Equity Alliance Minnesota. So I'd like to level the meeting first, just to go through, Sarah, if you can go to our mission statement. You know, and everything is grounded in our mission statement. In partnership with our community, we'll educate lifelong learners to succeed in a diverse world. All right, so we can go to our next one. This is our Excellence with Equity Statement Mission. Staff, students, and families will develop a raised awareness and capacity to engage, inspire, and communicate on issues of excellence with equity. Furthermore, Shakopee Public Schools understands the importance of providing a high-quality educational experience for all students. And the next, I'll just have this up here for like 10 seconds, I'll just read the bold print to you. Educational equity, so simply put, it allows all students the resources necessary, right? And big emphasis on resources necessary to be successful within an educational setting. So as we talk about this comprehensive needs assessment, I want you to think about those three, our mission, our excellence with equity, and our educational equity. I want you to think about those three things, okay? All right, go ahead. All right, so why we did an audit, why we did this. First, we did this in response to our Shakopee Schools' unique learner needs and our changing demographics. As you guys know, our district, we're at 43% kids of color in our district, which is, which is a big change, you know, when you look at the past 10 years. And with changing demographics come changing in teaching and learning and education, right? So that's one reason that we did the audit. The next, we wanted to take a proactive approach in closing our gap. And we're going to use these findings to create a three, three to five-year equity plan for our district. Which, you know, in the past, you guys, we, we haven't had that three to five-year plan, something that we've been, we've been wanting to do, but we haven't, we haven't done that. We've been doing it year by year by year, and we've made some, we've, we've done some good things, but now to have that three to five-year plan, it's going to be really good for our district. Ensure that we're in alignment with our mission statement, which we just read, and creating equitable opportunities for each of our students. And last, but certainly not least, this is the big one. It's going to help identify the areas for equitable growth throughout our system, help ensure professional development and instructional support for our teachers to be impactful, culturally responsive teachers and staff, right?
And so this is where I kind of jump in, and I want to preface my gratitude to, first, the superintendent for having the courage and the school board, for having the courage, and Nancy and Ray for identifying us and entrust us with this big responsibility. I want to, I want to say that, that this is not to be taken lightly, because it puts you in a place in Minnesota where so many districts are scared to do this, with even higher rates of students of color. And so you really should be proud of yourselves for engaging in this process, to want to advance the academic success of all of your students. And I just want to preface that, because considering the turnover that's happened in Shakopee, you guys are in pretty good shape, considering what's, what's taken place over the last six years there. And so I just want, I want to identify that, because that's not to be, that's not to be minimized, and those are big, those are big, like, we have a turnover in leadership the way that you all did, and had to kind of overcome those things, to be in a place where overall your students feel pretty safe and cared for, that's a big deal. They have some challenges, and we'll share that, but that's a pretty big deal. And so I just want to, I want to honor you all and, and taking part in that process. So I, I want to start by saying that we're going to kind of go do like a 20, 30,000-foot view of this, because it's my understanding that you all have a copy of the executive summary. Am I correct in saying that? Yes, I don't feel like, so someone could just give me like a nod, yeah, okay, that's good. Good. So I want you to refer to that if there's, if I'm not, because I don't want to go too, too minute. I want to just kind of do the 10,000-foot view. So I want to start with problems and practices. And these are the things overall that we know that are happening really well, and that we wanted to kind of accentuate as we continue on in this dialogue. So, so we identified, well, let me go backwards. We, we, before, when we did this audit, we did it in partnership with your staff. And so for every person that we identified on my organizations, and we partnered that person on your end to do the work with. And so we had typically teams of two, right? Which meant that teams of two would either go into a building and/or a classroom to do, to do observation. So this information would be seen from somebody on the inside, so to speak, and someone looking from the outside, so to speak, okay? I just want to clarify that. So when we culminated all this stuff, this is coming from a combination of our voices and also internal voices. And I wanted to make that clear. So some of the problems and practices that are identified is that there's really strong horizontal alignment of curriculum between, from level to level, all the way up. So wherever you have directing, teaching, and learning, has done a really nice job with creating some practices horizontally from your elementary all the way up to high school. And so there's really strong evidence that that's taking place, and that's taking, has a nice foothold, okay? The second thing that we want to identify, which puts you really, that's kind of positioned you in a really nice place, especially considering where we are in having this kind of dialogue technologically, is your abundance of technology in the district. That, again, puts you way ahead of the curve, and it's your challenge with a lot of students and a lot of districts, because they have a tool to be able to access, access educational classrooms and access core and things of that nature. So you have, you've invested in a lot of technology that you didn't know at the time, but it has greatly benefited you right now, today. So that's a plus. So that makes it, you're being forward-thinking about that. And then I want to say this, there's pockets of relationships from student to student and staff to staff that are, that are creating culture, making your kids feel comfortable about their race and their culture. And I say pockets, because what you'll find in your executive summary and in this presentation is that two things can be true at the same time, okay? And I want to be clear about that, two things can be true. Good things can be happening over here, but there may be a lack of it over here. So two things can be true at the same time. Next slide, please. So this is just the data, I want to break it down to you. And so buildings and classrooms were observed. So you had, you had four secondary buildings, you had your two middle schools, you had your high school, and you had your TLC observed. And then you had three elementary schools, and that was Sweeney, Red Oak, and Jackson, okay, out of your five. And then on the right-hand side, I know it's small, but on the right-hand side, it tells you how many classes were observed. And so from Jackson, you had 32, Sweeney, you had 25, Red Oak, you had 27, 52 from East Middle. West, you had 69, TLC, you had 14, and from a high school, you had 70 classes observed. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. These are the percentage of responses from the tool that we used, from the total of all the classes that we observed, okay? So if you think about all the schools and all the classes that we observed, this is breaking down for you what we saw. So just, I'm not going to go through all of them, just, but for example, 24% of the responses came from West Middle School. Just like 24% of responses came from the high school of the total. And we just want to tell you how it broke down, so we had a nice cross-section of responses. I would probably tell you that we probably saw too many classes, because I think we could have had enough information to go on lower. But it's never, it's never a bad thing to look and get enough, I'd rather be over than under. And so we went to quite a few classrooms, and we did, we also did building walkthroughs in all your buildings. And the building walkthroughs were relative to culture and climate, whereas a classroom wanted to identify what was happening for students of color. I want to explain and I want to make clear that, whatever we call it, what we were trying to ascertain is what is happening well for students of color? Because primarily, that's our focus group. What's happening well for students of color and what is not happening well? So what are the gaps in the system that are creating barriers for your students to learn at the rate that you need them to learn, okay? And if you think about what Ray said, 43% of your students are of color, that is a pretty rapid change in Shakopee. And I know that to be true, because one of the things that we heard was this old Shakopee, right, and this new Shakopee. And so that was some of the dialogue, and so I want to make sure that we're trying to identify what are the gaps particularly that take place or that are currently happening in Shakopee that are creating barriers for your students to not be as successful as they can be. Okay, you can go to the next slide, please. So this is a focus group participation along with a World Cafe. So I know that we try to do this really quick, so a lot of these things happen really on a really tight timeline. And so we had about 62 participants show up for the World Cafe. And even though it wasn't as many as we wanted, there was some really robust conversation. And Nancy and Ray, and anybody for that matter, if you have a question, if you all want to chime in, please feel free to do so, okay? So we had 62 participants for our World Cafe, and we had some students there. And like always, the students are profound. So if you really want to know what's happening with your schools, just talk to the students, because I'll tell you. And then to the right in the orange, you have the total percentage of students, staff that participated in our focus groups. Because now we did classroom walkthroughs, we did building walkthroughs, and then we also did a baby, a focus group. And this is again, I want, so let me explain the numbers that you're looking at. So for example, from your leadership group, you have a total of 44 people that, of the numbers that we received that are considered leadership, from deans all the way up to cabinet level, there were 44 people identified. And out of that, 44 people, 44% of them participated in the focus group. Does that make sense? So I just want to be clear on that. Just like for your staff affinity groups of all, so when you say staff affinity, it's like, it's like homogeneous people. So for, so for the 54% that you see in front of you, that's of all the people of color that work for Shakopee Public Schools. 54% of them participated in the focus group, okay, or were invited. That makes sense? Just like staff and non-certified staff, 5% of them were invited to the, to the focus group. So it's not that participated of the people that were invited. So I want to be clear about that. Any questions about this slide particularly?
Yes, Sebastian, I do have one question. Why, it, it just appears to me that the student participation level is remarkably lower. And I was just wondering if there's a reason for that, or if that's just cookie crumbled.
Yep, and I want to, it's not participation, it's invited students, it's the amount of students invited.
Okay.
Actually, I would just add to Paul that, so we have, you know, 8,200 students in the district. So if 3% is invited, and I know we had well into the hundreds of students, that was actually our largest volume of focus groups was drawn up with students. And I think what throws this off a little bit, because it's a percentage, when there's a small number, like I think for our staff of color, our total number there was maybe 43 people or 43 staff, and half of them participated.
Yeah.
Okay.
Small number. And so when you look at, you know, our total staff, which is in, you know, probably in that 1,400, 1,500 range, it might be a little high there. You know, 5%, that's a large number. It just doesn't look as large, because the, the total is so high.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
And Paul, I had a similar question too. This is dusting off my business statistics class back from college, but it seemed as though you've got a good sample size based on, you know, the, the outcomes that you were trying to project. But I appreciate the clarification, Nancy. I had a, again, similar question that Paul had.
Great question, and, and please feel free to ask any question you want, but
How many of the World Cafes, how many of those were, how many times were they done? I went to one and I thought there were more than one.
We were only to get, we only got one World Cafe in
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But I can tell you, that's not, that's not going to be represented in this presentation, but your students loved it, and, and the parents that did show up certainly want those to continue. They certainly love being heard and talking about the things that are happening well for them and some of the challenges that they face as well. So that's a really good question.
I learned an awful, I learned an awful lot going there, especially from the students, it would be. I, I understand why, you know, it looks like it's a low amount of students, but even more students would be even better. I learned so much from them.
And Judy, the second World Cafe was just going to be a student-led one that we do with Jordan, Prior Lake, and Shakopee Schools, and we invite teachers to that one where it's students-led. That was going to be the second one, which was the end of April.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. So again, I want to mention that you do have the executive summary, you have all the recommendations, but I wanted to sum up the three recommendations that we thought were probably the largest ones and probably were the most prevailing ones, if you will. And so what I did and what I'm trying to convey in this slide is we have the recommendation to the left-hand side. Obviously, if you want to go to the next slide too, so I can see what I'm referencing. So what I'm trying to convey is that on the left-hand side, and maybe So what I'm trying to convey is that on the left-hand side and maybe left-hand side of the slide, you have recommendations. On the right-hand side, we wanted to couple that because when I was having conversations with Ray and uh Superintendent Redman and Nancy earlier. Is that I thought and I believe that we were going to get the most thing for our buck, so to speak, with the voices of the people that. That reside in your schools, whether it be staff and our students. So what I did is we coupled that with stakeholder voices, okay? And so I um so I wanted to show you some some of the recommendations that came up that are probably the most prevailing, like I said. And so recommendation one is communication. Um, and so we wanted to make it ensure that all student, student, staff, teachers, community members' voices are heard. In a systemic fashion, and you're going to hear that the culmination of our findings, and I'll say it now, and I'll show you again in the slide that's coming up subsequently. Is that this is going to be about systems, right? And I liken the lack of some systems to the turnover that has taken place uh amongst the 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 head leadership owner district. Right? And then the visions of people from that from person to person to person. And so as relates to a recommendation around communication, it's about making sure that all the voices are heard, whether it be from building, leadership, staff, students, and families. And um and then we want to create opportunities like the like the um the World Cafes. Where students' voices can continue to be amplified because we know that that's happening in pockets. But we want to continue the opportunity where students feel like they like they have some stake in what's happening for them in buildings, okay? And so there's a quote, does somebody have something to say? I heard a little voice. Okay, I'll continue. And so I want to, but I'm going to read these quotes, so forgive me for reading these quotes. And so this is from a affinity group focus group. I know I only speak English and I need to communicate with families and their liaisons are stretched. That sometimes it's hard to connect with a liaison that I need in order to communicate at home. And so I feel like my communication with families specifically that speaks Spanish, Somali, or Russian. Is a lot worse than with our English-speaking families or even the families that I have to use a language line for because. That because that's just more available to me. So what you're trying to say is that there's not enough resources in that regard to be communicating with families at home that speak a second language. And that's just one of the areas. We only focused on one that because that was the prevailing thought. This idea that we need to be communicating with families who speak a second language, but we don't necessarily have enough support in that regard. But it's happening at all these levels, whether it be with building, leadership, and staff. Uh one of the comments is as relates to equity specifically is that your staff uh repeatedly wanted to know what is our plan for equity? And I know that Nancy and Ray and Mike are working on that, and they've communicated some pieces of that, and they're going to continue to do so. But that was a question that they had. Okay, if you want to go to the next slide, please. Uh curriculum. So one of the things is that students with your forty-three percent uh population of students of color, they want to see themselves in the curriculum. They want, they want to embed race and culture in the curriculum. They want to see themselves. They want to hear from more perspective, perspective, perspectives that are non-white. And this idea of ethnic studies at the middle and high school levels and or multicultural class. Um, that's really a big initiative from the state standpoint right now is creating these ethnic studies classes. And so this is a quote, though, um from a high school focus group. But like one problem I have is that like I took AP World last year. And it was nice to be able to learn about different cultures and like different, you know, kingdoms, dynasties, and all that. But I do feel like the whole curriculum was like a Eurocentric base. Now, if a high school student, there's a lot of likes in there. So you gotta, you're past, but this is verbatim. I'm gonna. Oh, because we wanted to capture them verbally. At all point of our focus group is capturing people's voices verbatim. And so you have to forgive me for all the likes that are included in the quotes, okay? But they but they, this again, it was a prevailing thought. They want to be able to see and hear and know that they're valued by seeing themselves in the curriculum. And that also goes to this one, the next slide. Which is systems. And if I had, if you asked me.
No.
If you asked me to top up the whole, what I think would be the key finding of this audit would be systems. And it would be relative to the things that you see on the slide. It would be around multi-tiered systems of support. How are we serving students? Um, you know, how are we meeting their needs? Uh recruitment, so the last slide that we had, so students, we reference this, and staff references, what is our recruitment plan for staff of color? Um, what is our ongoing communications? And I know these, some of these things are in place, um but I think that a few of them can be more bolstered up. Um, retain students of color in advanced level courses. I know that's a focus area certainly right now for Nancy and Ray and Superintendent. What's happening in the curriculum for students to feel like they're part of that curriculum and then identify like a three to five year plan? And so I want to, I want to kind of further that with this quote uh from a leadership focus group that says. I think that our response is fairly slow. I think when it comes to policies, procedures, procedures, there's a number of things that create barriers for a lot of our families. Again, that's repeating your historical marginalized families. And so again, if I had to repeat, what I think our our report found is this idea of system being implemented across the board vertically and horizontally. And we've had those conversations with Ray and Nancy, and so we've had this uh what may come later. And so that's that's a quick thirty thousand foot view, and if you have questions for me, that's now is a good time to ask. And then you also have the executive summary that I've aforementioned before. And so you can wait to ask questions or you can go ahead and whenever you want, but this slide uh is for Ray right here, the next slide, if you will.
Okay, so Sebastian, how, do you have any recommendations on how we can make things less Eurocentric?
Yeah, uh uh so those are the conversations that we're having with Ray and Nancy now. And part, part of this is, you know, there's a lot of things that people can do, but one is building the capacity with staff to feel like they have the toolsets that they need. And a lot of it, honestly, uh Paul, is confidence to have this dialogue, to have the information, to be able to pull from different uh areas to to make their curriculum. And I I know that Nancy is going to currently be putting a lot of effort in that and Ray. Um, but as we talk about this capacity and this idea of of staff feeling like they have, they know how to have these conversations. They know how to interact with kids um when there's challenges. It's not just about the content, it's about, it's about the conversation, it's about seeing themselves, it's about how the, how people are responding to them. When behavioral things come up. So it's not just about the content, if you will, it's much broader than that. So it's how are we responding to the needs of our kids? And how and what are we using, what kind of resources are we using to make sure that we value who they are? And so um one of the things that Nancy is going to be looking at, and we talked about is this idea of uh uh um multicultural resources by way of books. So to bolster up, to bolster up the the resources that we have that people can use for we to to include multiple voices and perspectives. And so I think Nancy has a pretty good handle on it. You go ahead, Nancy. I see that you want to speak.
Yeah, no, I just want to say that unfortunately, uh it's still an issue um with packaged curriculum. Especially in the area of social studies, I would use as an example, that it's just not naturally integrated within. Uh uh typical units. It's still unfortunately sort of add-ons and pieces like that. So it makes it more complicated for our teachers because it's things they have to often create it on their own or that we have to do collectively as a as a piece that's. That's going to then get merged with other resources. And I'm confident we can do a better job with that, but I I think what um Sebastian said is part of it too. Is building an understanding and awareness about why we need to do that work as well uh for our teachers. Um, because it isn't typical necessarily in their experiences, um in their background, um in preparation. So, you know, I I definitely, we've talked even about trying to do some auditing in terms of resources, et cetera. But um I I would say that, I would just say that I feel like it's accurate in terms of what we need to do.
Right, right.
I had a question about the communications slide, um especially where it says ensure heard voices. Um, I'm wondering exactly what does that look like, that action is taken or that there is uh a discussion that happens? Or could that be clarified a bit?
Yeah, sure could. And it's, and I got to tell you that it's different for different constituencies, right? So when you think about the focus groups and you think about from what staff is saying about that relative to what's happening, I'll give you an example. What is the plan for equity, right? I heard that repeatedly. What are we doing? What's the communication? And 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 when there is a plan, how will it be marketed and communicated to our staff? So that that was all, that was an ongoing question, like what is it? So that's relative to staff, so that came up quite a, quite a few times. Um, especially uh considering that uh last year, there was a more of a focus for our equity staff to be utilized on a secondary level versus elementary level. And I know that that's changed because you'll hear about some things that are changing within the departments. And so that was one of the bigger things about communication. With the students, it's again, it's it's a response. It's the lack of them feeling heard. And the disparity that they believe is happening when a student of color does something versus a white student. And so and then the conversation that happens and doesn't happen. So, for example, I, there's going to be times legitimately so where something happens with students and it seems like it's unfair to them. And there's no follow-up conversation after that. So there's some type of conversation initially, and there's two people involved, and let's say. It's a person of color and a non-white person of color, and they get split up and different things, different conversations are happening. And then there's no like culmination of what happened in that communication. A lot of our focus group, we found a lot of our students felt like they were even not even being seen and valued often, often enough. And so it's going to different, uh and then leadership had some of the same questions that staff did, like. You know, um and when I say leadership, I don't mean like cabinet members because they they know they're in the know. But it's some people relative like, so are we going to get more staff of color? And are we going to get uh more cultural liaisons and things of that nature? And what is Ray's planning and and things like that? So there's some some need for um when decisions are made, how that's communicated about. And a lot of our focus on what's happening relative to equity uh equity needs.
And I would just add that I think especially in the student-focused uh data, um I think there was some really valid um. Statements and patterns, themes about not feeling consistently uh in in involved with major. You know, policies, direction, that kind of thing. And I know that's something that, you know, the board, and I know specifically Judy, you and I have talked about. And so some of that is the systemness of it. What's our system for collecting student voice? Um, you know, collecting family voices. You know, I think we we are more, uh we have a better system for, I think, getting a teacher input. Are we doing all of that from a systematic point of view? Um, and I think, you know, the feedback certainly from students is that we could improve how we uh reach out and get their voice. Um, on a number of issues.
And then, and then I will say, when you do do, when you do that, there needs to be some follow-up to say, these are the things that are how, this is how we're responding to the issues you have. And that's on any level. How are we, so this is our response, what you, the 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 uh issues that you have raised, if you will.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Mm-hmm. Makes sense.
So one of the pieces of feedback um that I've heard consistently throughout my nine years on the board has been the recruiting staff of color. Right? Uh, does anyone have any great ideas, any specific? Um, you know, pathways? I know at one point in time, we were sending HR people and principals to, I think, Michigan State and somewhere in Indiana or Illinois. Programs that were regionally renowned for producing uh great staff, uh particular color. Is that still the best practice or is there anything else we can be doing now?
You just stole my question.
So that's a, that's a, that's a tough question, man, because I, what I will tell you is that first and foremost, and I don't want to be an excuse, but it's true. That the teaching population of people of color is very small, not just in Minnesota, but across the board, across the United States. But how, so some, one of the questions is, how, for the, for that pool of people that exists in Minnesota, how do we make Chocopee attractive to them? What resources do we have in place that when they come, the retention stays and they feel supported? So how do we know if they come to a place that they're by and large going to feel isolated, especially in a classroom as a person of color? How are we supporting them and how are we making that attractive to them? So how are you marketing that? There has to be some relationships, though, like you said, with the feeders, and that's what, when I say, when I say feeders, I mean the universities. And I don't think that you have to go to Michigan and all those places. I think you can start with SCSU, which I think still has the largest teaching prep program in the state. So you can start there and create some relationships there and say, hey, of all the students of color that you have that are getting ready to go into the field, either that they can do the student teaching with us. And if they do, we we will guarantee them an interview, not a job, but an interview. So I think there's some articulation things that you can set up with different universities in Minnesota, because I think the interest is growing. Um, but it's not quite there. And then I think that you have some staff, we said. Currently, Matt, you have forty-four people of color that work in your district that are not teachers. Can we create pathways for them to become teachers? How many of our sort of, how many of our staff that are of color have degrees? And what pathways exist for us to create these this program that they become teachers and how are we enticing them to do so? So there's some things that exist, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we got to do. I think you got to kind of think outside the box a little bit. Because I'll tell you, as a black male, um teaching is not that attractive to the masses of people of color. But there are people who want to be teachers, and I'll tell you on the flip side of that, there are also people of color who want to be teachers. Okay, but I think we have to be creative. So those are, those are a few ideas that I would have. Nancy, you have, Mike, anything to add?
I think I would just add that one thing I think we learned from Equity Alliance Minnesota too is how the retain is really important too. So having some um specific things, meetings, support groups for staff, affinity staff groups.
Yep.
Um, making sure that there's some uh appropriate mentorship, that kind of thing is another part of the solution.
And I think another thing is looking at, you know, looking at our academies right now and the Grow Your Own program. I mean, it's not called Grow Your Own, but that's what we're looking at as is, you know, showing these kids like what teaching and and the responsibilities and. What a career path this could be for these kids. You know, it's no better than having a kid, you know, grow up, born and raised in Chocopee and come back and teach in Chocopee. They understand the kids, the dynamics, the structures, you know, and 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 that passion that needs to come out in teaching will come out because they, their hearts all in it. So I think I'm I'm looking forward to that. Now that's going to be down the road. When you talk about a three to five-year plan. That's something we might be able to see the fruits of our labor in maybe five to eight years with that program.
And that's true. I'm glad you said that, man, because if you can, and I think the way that you create that and create a more sense of urgency for your younger people. Is if you can, if you can fashion a few of your current staff to go down that pathway as well, and the ones that specifically have relationships with those young people. That will be more enticing to them. Absolutely right.
Yes. Yeah, I was going to add, I think it's some of the things that you want to do universally that we've talked about, and I won't, I won't go into that. But I'm glad you mentioned the Grow Your Own program, Ray. I was going to even, you know, that's one of the uh. I I I don't know, fruits of belonging to uh the the Ford NGL network is you get to look at places, you know, trying to do similar things with academies. And one of them, uh Rockford has an incredible Grow Your Own program where really it's an eight-year. Uh program starting in ninth grade and really all those things where you're, you're basically, you're, you're going, hey, teaching is awesome. And here's how you become a teacher, and here are the things you do. And it's even, they've paired up and they've worked on tackling the challenge of paying for college, tackling the challenge of. You know, that a lot of teachers have where, how do I student teach? You know, it's one of the few internships. Where you might be for a half a year doing an unpaid internship in your fourth year of college. And uh that's a, that's a tough road to hoe for a lot of people. So they found ways around those challenges. And I I think it's one of the things as educators or in the system of education, we have not done a very good job selling that, hey, this is a great profession. Teaching is awesome, and let's figure out how to, how to get more and more young people involved in that. So I think it's a lot of things, but was very, very impressed by the Rockford program and think it could, you know, take the great things we're doing and make them even better. Yeah.
All right, so are we, are we done off of uh Sebastian's slide? You want it, should I move on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so um as you guys know, some things have been done already. Yeah, I mean, even, we didn't wait until. Uh, until we got the final uh report or the final summary from from the audit. There were some things that we were doing because, you know, the work has to, has to keep moving, right? So um I'm going to take this right from from Mike Redman. When Mike came in, there were two big. Ticket items for him. One was assessment for learning, and the other was equity. And he said that from day one coming into building, so equity was a high priority. So we knew there's some things that we had to do.
So we knew there's some things that we had to do right away. And one of the things that he talked about right away was the merger of our departments, bring putting together our teaching and learning department and our equity department together, which is which has been phenomenal, combining those resources together. When you when you look at Equity Alliance Minnesota, partnering with Equity Alliance, already we've got some dates on the docket for our for some PD, not only for staff, our for our department, but also for our our leadership with our principals. We were already getting some things all with some professional development all set for that. So Equity Alliance has been a just a great resource for us in the district. Our A and I plan, which if if Dave Rolowski was here, he could probably tell you, I mean, I mean, Nancy has learned. Everybody that's kind of come in new that's putting their hands on the A and I plan is like, wow, this, I mean, it's a lot to it. But working together, not only with my myself and and now with T and L with Ford and Equity Alliance and getting this plan together has been awesome. So it's already been submitted. We are waiting for approval, but I want to read you a statement from from Pam Booker from M D E, M D E, who I work directly with, well, Shakopee, so whoever was before me turning in these plans. Also, we're turning things into Pam Booker. I'm gonna read this statement to you because I think it's pretty awesome. She says, hi, Ray. I am reviewing your new plan and must let you know it is the best plan I have read from Shakopee since I've been here at M D. Well done. You know, and then she goes and you know, there's a suggestion there. But it just shows you that we're moving things forward. And and when I got that that email from Pam, because I know Nancy was, you know, like, oh, my God, you know, is this gonna, you know? But it was, that was that was all that was really good to hear from her. And just to know that we are doing the right things, we're moving in the right direction. I think the audit again and and the partnership with Equity Alliance has really been a big bonus for us. And Mike, making equity a high priority for us in the district. You can move on to the next slide. Talked a little bit about that reorganization in the district. I want I want everybody to know that it's not just, it's not just the, you know, it's a big department now. You've got all your instructional coaches, your DLCs in there, your cultural liaison, equity specialist. You've got the supervisors with Ford and with NICA in there. So it's a very big organization and we're already doing some things to come together. We're doing some reorganizations of our equity department as well. We're gonna move from, I, we were mostly stationed in the secondary school, well, at the high school. Now we will be district wide. So we're looking at adding another equity specialist. If our 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 A and I plan gets approved, we'll add another equity specialist to it so that we can be district wide. K through twelve, which is going to be awesome, which is one of the things I think Sebastian could probably speak to as well, was one of the things that we heard a lot, not only from our 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 leadership group, but as well as from teachers saying, you know, all the equity spec, all of the resources are all at the high school. They're not at the middle school and they're not at the elementary school. Why is that? Why is that? And now we've we've changed that and we're looking forward to that this year. And there's still some things that we're working on. Nancy and I and the team, there's some still things that we're working on. We've got clarity now with our job roles and our job descriptions. Our equity specialists are going to be in buildings doing direct and indirect programs. We'll still keep our avid, our young scholars, our checking connect programming will still be ineffective as they've been going on. So any questions on those right there? Nancy, anything that you want to add to that?
Well, I think it would just flow if Sarah wants to go to the next slide.
Okay.
You know, so what we've done is we have, oh, Ray, I thought it was my slide. I got that wrong.
I can hit this real quick.
I'm sorry.
You know, we talked about now here's a big one, family engagement. Now, when I look at family engagement, we talk about family engagement. It's it's a partnership. And I know with a lot of our our historically marginalized families, right? That's one thing that I hear a lot about is the is the family engagement piece. You know, how do we get more families of color at conferences? How do we get them more this so that we're going to take a big, we're going to put that on our shoulders and really trying to up that and make that partnership. Because you know, if you can, what an impact that makes when you get family involved, you know? Same thing, Paul, you seen a little bit, you know, I do with the football. When you can bring those moms together, those families together, the more you can bring people together, the more the kids, the roles and more people step up. So those are some things that we're going to be doing. We're going to call them the the ABCs of family engagement nights. And so I can get a little bit more in detail with that, but I know because of time I won't. But my role, which has always been in question, I've always been, my role has always been, I've been a supervisor, but I've been in the weeds, as Nancy likes to say. So I'm I'm one of those ones, yeah, I'm a supervisor, but I want to be right there with the kids and I was. I was right there with the kids. I was right there with the teachers in the buildings, in the classrooms and doing everything I can to help with those kids. But now my role is going to be more systems, creating systems for our historically marginalized kids, looking at, you know, systems in the district, the buildings and our students. Having contact with all of our admin district wide, E through twelve, my support will be E through twelve. And like I said, again, supporting those systems that we're putting in to all the buildings are indirect and direct services that are going on with our equity department.
And then Sarah, if you want to scroll to the next one, what Ray was alluding to is Ray will really help develop what we see as teams of support of every building. So to just go back to the equity specialist position for a second. So K eight, our five elementary schools and our two middle schools will each have a point five equity specialist. And an equity specialist will not have more than two buildings to serve. Ray will be a contact for for Central as well as for the TLC. And other specialists might help as an unneeded basis. But they're going to have significant time in their two schools they'll share. And we see that as an opportunity to create some support for students, families and staff by being able to really have them pair with our instructional coaches, our administration, our social workers or counselors, as well as our DLCs. And, you know, as a whole department, as we have brought teaching and learning and equity together, we've really been working on growing our equity mindset. And so for what I would call kind of on the TL, T and L side, our coaches are really working to incorporate some of those culturally responsive practices. We're really growing together our equity lens. And we're really increasing our collaboration across programs within our department, like our EL program with our equity team, professional development, including a wider range of staff, that kind of thing. And then the last slide, Sarah.
I think it's just the recommendations.
Yeah.
Yes.
Steps, yep.
And I want to emphasize and I really want to say, first of all, thank you for allowing us to go on this journey with you all. And one of the one of the things I like to share all the time is that even equity is all about teaching and learning. It's all about getting our kids to the places we need them to be critical thinkers and providing enough and still enough resources in them and skill sets so they can make decisions for themselves and go out and be gainfully employed, whatever they want to do after high school. And so it's all about teacher learning. I want to emphasize that. And I want to say thank you for allowing us to be with you on this journey. Some of the recommendations that are possible for us to continue on, I know that Ray had mentioned some of the professional development that we have talked about already that we're gonna that are on the books already. But some other things that we recommend for your district would be to create a three to five year plan. And some of the things that would be included in that three to five year plan would be some professional development with leadership and staff. And and Nancy talked about how we're doing some stuff with leadership. But we ultimately know that the the, you know, the buck stops in a classroom and that's where the most growth happens. And so you eventually want to get into the classroom and work with with teachers around building the capacity to be more impactful with all of your students. Creating again those systems around MTSS for the students that need that extra school or the extra resource for them to be successful, which is really the definition of equity. How are we providing that support to them? Okay, so you want to bolster your MTSS structures. And then we need, we need to 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 increase our believability in what we say we do by creating a policy that speaks to what do we stand for in Shakopee Public Schools? And when we say we mean something, it's embedded in that policy. And so that's may that may be a call respectfully, maybe a call to action for the board to think about this idea of policy development around our equity, okay? And then we also want to do student programming. So you add those things in place. So one of the things you do is you do student affinity groups, which is great. And the reason the student affinity groups are powerful because oftentimes people of color and and white homogeneous areas can feel isolated. So it allows them to kind of unpack some of that stuff that's happening on a day to day basis, whether it be the microaggressions or some of that. So when they when they are able to unpack that and release it, they can go back into a larger, greater community and be more successful. And so through the programs to focus on not just your black and brown kids, but 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 have some type of lens on them to support them to create these wraparound structures for them to be more successful. And then when, but here's the thing. There's often this fallacy that that when you when you create these equity structures for black and brown kids, that white kids are losing. No, white kids are actually gaining because we all do better. Like Paul Wellstone said, we all do better when we all do better, right? And that's the idea. So I want to emphasize that. But those are some of the things that we want to potentially, as we look towards the future, having this three to five year equity.
And I believe that is our last slide. Yes. Are there any questions?
Well, I'll just say on behalf of of board members, I'm sure we all feel the same way that there's a lot of work that went into this assessment. And the information that was presented tonight is great. And I look forward to developing the plan more and in seeing the progress that we're making as a district as as time progresses forward. I know this is very important to our district. And I know that we've got the the right people in place to help lead that charge and and develop our staff and students. So thank you for everything you've done. This was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Also, Ray, this is more directed at you, but it's it's for the whole team as well. I think that if we see half the passion put into this, that you put into your football teams, we're going to have a great and exciting time in Shakopee moving forward. And I'm really looking forward to that.
Absolutely, Paul. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any further questions? All right, seeing none, thanks again for your time. Thanks, Sebastian, for joining us tonight. Thanks for everything that your team has done as well to work with Nancy and Ray and and everyone else in the district.
It's been a pleasure and thank you all as well.
Thank you, everybody.
All three of you.
Be well. Bye bye.
All right, we're going to move on to item seven point two, which is the update on the 2020 C bonds. Mike, would you like to give us a little information on that?
I will. The the short story is we we put that bond sale on hold. If you remember, we we had approved it or the board had approved it on March twenty third. And obviously, at that time, that next week, things were incredibly volatile in the markets. And it just wasn't, it wasn't the right time to sell bonds. The prices would have been high, the the terms would have been poor. So we've just put that on hold. The earliest we'll we'll bring that back would be April twenty seventh. But just wanted to give you an update because that was something that came out of that March twenty third meeting. And to be honest, nothing happened. But I appreciate Baker Tilly and Bill Manassi, the finance director, because they came to me, you know, some at some point that next week or early the following week and said, hey, this is this is not a good market. And I think we made the prudent decision and we'll we'll try it again when when things are better.
Are there any questions in regards to the 2020 C bond?
Yeah, Mike, do we have a certain alimony point where regardless of how the market's doing, we're going to have to sell the bonds or is this something we can still continue to sit on?
Well, we we've done a lot of work. We we actually brought the SiteLogic, the company that's going to do the work in. We brought Baker Tilly in, I sat in on the meeting with Bill to kind of lay all that out. And there's certainly, we we've got some pretty large scale health and safety type projects. But we do have a little bit more time and and they're still kind of refining that plan because, you know, you want to time it right and at some point you want to fund those, you know, you want to fund that and you want to do it at the right rates. So so, like I said, the earliest we'd be back is April twenty seventh. We do have some some window after that as well. But we're continuing to evaluate that, to look at that and and just, you know, I know Bill, see, I think Bill has probably talked to financial advisors more often in the last three weeks than maybe any finance director typically in the state of Minnesota. It's about every day or every other day, kind of updating, how does this look? And continuing to ask those questions because this is really a typical. I mean, typically you pass the resolution, things don't change like they were changing on March twenty third and that following week. So we do have a bit of time, you know, and there there are even, there was a lot of what if planning. So and I'm not really ready to to report on that. But it so there's not, it's not a drop dead date on April twenty seventh by any means.
Okay, so we're just kind of seeing as we go, basically?
We are, we are. And and and, you know, at at some point, we believe that that bond market should actually be pretty strong and pretty favorable. You know, that there there appears to be stimulus coming into the economy. We expect probably more of that. But things are so uncertain right now that, you know, the the market and the bond market within that aren't necessarily reacting to the typical stimuli, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this topic? All right. Seeing none, thanks for the update, Mike. We'll move on to seven point three, which is an update on distance learning, food distribution and childcare.
Yeah, and I'm gonna I'm gonna open with a couple of statements and then, you know, if you've got other questions, I'll try to share some things. I know I, you know, Ashley and I sat in on an interview with Matty from the Shakopee Valley News. And I don't tend to get emotional that often in those type of things. But talking about our staff and the team, the fourteen hundred team members, our employees of the Shakopee Public Schools and our community, and and just how proud I am of what they've accomplished really in the last, not even a month, since we had that all day Sunday meeting. It actually brought tears to my eyes when I was wrapping that that interview up. So because it is that heartfelt and we're getting to see the fruits of that labor. But we had an eight day planning period to flip how we how we do school in essence and shift to distance learning. And the reports that that I've gotten, far, the vast majority of them have been very, very positive, very appreciative of our teachers and the connections with kids and the support for kids. I know that they're they've built in some feedback loops and they're working on ways to build more of those in. We want voices from parents and guardians and from students and teachers. And I know Nancy and her team and the principals are are working hard on that because we we certainly didn't expect, I think I wrote, I was hopeful it'd be pretty darn good when we rolled it out. I knew it wasn't going to be perfect. And I think it was pretty darn good. And now the question is, how do we continue to tweak it? How do we get better? You know, what did we miss? Because that's a that that was really an unprecedented shift. And so I think the things happening there are just fantastic and it's just heartwarming to see, you know, those connections and I guess I've I've seen it my whole life. You know, I've been in education my entire adult life. And I knew about the connections between teachers and kids and and how strong those were and those relationships. I think they've been on display for the really the entire country to see that we've opened that up and I think people are just wowed by that. And I'm like, well, that's how it always is, you know, that people, our teachers care. And and it's really, really hard to even measure the depth of that caring. Food distribution, I jotted a note last week. Our food distribution teams delivered ten thousand one hundred twenty meals. So between Monday and Friday of last week, they they delivered over ten thousand meals. We've got twelve bus stops. We've got the drive through at the high school. And then we're obviously doing food service at Sunpath where they're doing the care for the children of essential employees. And that is continuing to go well. Those numbers, they ratcheted up a little bit in childcare. We we touched the the low forties, I think it was forty one or forty two. I think it was 41 or 42, I think a week ago, Wednesday and Thursday, or I should say last Wednesday and Thursday. They've typically been kind of in the low 30s. Um, but again, that, that program, I've, I've had, uh, multiple opportunities to walk through both the food distribution, uh, and the childcare, and it, it just warms my heart. It's just neat to see, uh, what's happening, uh, at Sunpath and that childcare program. And, uh, and then it's awfully special to see what's going on with the food distribution. And, uh, I joked with the team at the high school, you know, I got to see their first couple of days efforts and they were pretty good. They have become a well-oiled machine. They have, uh, created quite the system and, uh, yeah. And I think the one day, I can't remember what they said. It was, they had 562 cars or some, some number like that roll through between 11 and one. And they've just, it's, you know, so if you get a chance between 11 and one, you know, keep, keep physical distancing, but certainly feel free to stop by any of the food distribution points or stop by the high school and just tell them you appreciate what they're doing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, Mike, a comment of Paul, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead, Matt.
Okay. Thanks. Um, Mike, those are amazing stats and it is just heartwarming to see, you know, our staff members, uh, doing such wonderful things for the community. I just also want to call out, um, some of the volunteers that, that support some organizations affiliated with the high school. Um, Sabre Nation Station, the Almiron Association, the great work that they're doing, delivering toiletries and whatnot to people who no longer have access. Um, just phenomenal work that like you said, brings tears to your eyes when you see a community rally around itself and, and support those who need help. Just want to make that comment, Paul. I'll hand it to you.
Okay. Um, I, I don't want to put the cart before the horse here, but if the governor reopens the schools on May 4th, um, is it really going to be financially wise to open the schools for a month and then just shut them down? Or do you know if they're going to give us any options in there?
Uh, at this point I do not, other than the governor, he did, he did hop on a call with superintendents. I think it was last week. Uh, he's certainly, you know, he's putting the, the wellbeing of kids and, and, uh, you know, trying to find that right balance between the, the health in our state and, uh, the economy in our state. And, uh, you know, so I, I know that we're doing great things with distance learning. I think if there were an opportunity to return to onsite school, and if that, uh, if that were with the governor and, uh, the folks leading that charge, uh, determined that it was the right thing to do. Uh, I think, you know, it, it wouldn't be without some challenges, but I, I think most of our folks would really welcome, welcome the return. So.
Well, and just to note on that as well, so we watched the two o'clock update with Governor Walz and he extended for another 30 days, the social distancing requirement. So that's essentially through, uh, the, the middle of May. So at that point, you know, Paul, I think you, you raise a good point or a question. It's, you're really looking at about three weeks. If you take into consider, uh, Memorial Weekend and, uh, you know, where the last day of school lands. The, the longer you go into May, the, the more that decision to reopen needs to be vetted. Uh, and along with that programming and sports and everything else.
Yeah. And I think, uh, to piggyback off that Tim, I think the governor said last week, or maybe it was the week before, um, when he was asked about schools reopening, um, that he wasn't going to rule it out, but he felt that there was a slim chance that they would be reopening this year.
Right. Well, and, and as an aside, and I, I get updates from the city of Bloomington, uh, only because I had subscribed to their, uh, site long ago. Uh, they had extended the peacetime emergency through June 30th in their board meeting last Monday. So I don't know what that means in terms of, is it going to be per district? Is it going to be per state? You know, like somewhere in between? Um, I, I, it's hard to speculate. But I agree, Chrissy, it's, it just seems unlikely that, um, it would make a lot of sense for the governor to say schools back in session on the 4th. But what, we can remain optimistic.
Right.
Yeah. And I know he did, uh, yeah, he did extend that emergency order through, what was it? May 13th. But I think, you know, also I think in terms of executive orders, the one in place for schools is, is through May 4th, uh, as is the current stay at home order. And certainly I know they're studying and evaluating and, um, yeah, you know, so it's, again, it's, you know, we've invested in that shift and we'll do whatever, whatever we're called upon to do to the best of, of our abilities. Matt, you did get me thinking too. There's, you know, good to go on Fridays at East, you know, there's other programs. We've had other, uh, you know, community groups, uh, try to, uh, really provide wraparound services with our food distribution. One of the, one of the local church organizations, uh, even followed the buses around and said, hey, do you mind? And it's like, no, you want to provide supper and you want to provide other things? That's awesome. And so, I, I think not only it is, is it a lot of people, uh, stepping up, they're, they're really working to coordinate those efforts as best they can. And so I, I'm greatly, greatly appreciative of that. Uh, and you know, it, it has been heartwarming to see the community step forward and, and help one another.
I know I've been really, um, proud of our teachers and of our community and the way people have stepped forward. It's, um, it's going to be the great part of this story we'll tell in future years about being stuck at home.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think, I think.
And we're doing some great stuff here in Shakke. You'd all be proud.
And I think one of the things too, that, um, Mike, you had touched on it earlier. And one of the notes that I had about this topic was the connection between the teachers and students. Um, that's one of the things that I've been impressed with, uh, so much in the communication that my son has received from the teachers. Um, and I just, one in particular, uh, teacher reached out before distance learning started and said, um, you know, I, I'm not concerned about our subject matter as much as I'm, I care about you as my student and your wellbeing and how you're doing. Um, and that, to me, that meant a lot as a parent. Um, not, you know, of course I knew that this, this particular individual cared about the subject matter that they were teaching, but, um, just how much they care about the students and their wellbeing during this time of, of uncertainty is, is phenomenal. And I think one of the things too, that this is new territory for a lot of teachers. Uh, we have teachers that have taught for years and now have to experience teaching online, something that they never thought that they would probably have to do in their teaching career. So they are learning new things. And I've just, I think everything has gone, from what I'm seeing and what I've heard, everything has gone so well. Um, Nancy, I know your team went through a lot of work and, and training all of the staff. And, um, so kudos to your team. I got to see a little bit of behind the scenes at some of the meetings that I was involved with, um, at the district office when all this was kind of coming down. And so I appreciate everything you and your team have done to get our teachers up to speed and ready to teach online. Um, and please share that with the rest of your team as well, because I know there was a lot of hours and hard work that went into that. So, and I think that's why it's been a success because we had, we had the, the team in place to get our teachers ready for it. So thank you.
Yeah. And if I can just piggyback off that a little bit, um, you know, Mike, you and the entire district staff kind of went into this not knowing what or how to do things necessarily, but you guys really did a heck of a job writing the playbook.
Anything else, uh, in regards to, uh, updates on kind of our district learning, um, food service, childcare? So many people have been involved and from top down, it's just been a executed fantastically. And especially as it changed by the hour, by the day, um, of how things were supposed to be done and mandates were changing. And, um, I think it's just hats off to everybody in our district for a job well done. And we know that job's not done yet.
Have we given any thought to what E S Y is going to look like if we're going to even be able to do it?
I think all of those pieces, you know, are, are, we're in planning. I mean, they get planned months and months ahead. So I think it's, it's just waiting for more clarity on what the future holds. And, uh, I know that if, uh, you know, if, if in essence, the schools are open over the summer, if you will, and I know that's maybe sounded a little bit like an oxymoron. Um, but yeah, we'd be, we'll be ready to run, you know, the E S Y, we'll be ready to run the targeted services programming. Uh, we'll be ready to do all of those things. But, you know, all of that, you know, the planning is still going on with those things. That's the other challenge that I don't think, and I've probably done a poor job of sharing some of that. A lot of that planning is still going on. You know, in light of the whole, the, the new workloads that were dumped on people. So, uh, and I think some of that is really ratcheted up now this week, now that you feel like, all right, we've got things implemented. Uh, boy, we gotta be ready because what happens? You know, June 5th. Uh, are, you know, are the buildings available? Is it okay to run E S Y and targeted services over the summer? Is it okay to rent our buildings out again? Is it okay to run summer camps? And, you know, and then what happens if we open up on May 5th or, you know, May 12th? And so, uh, we, we, we're ready for any of those possibilities. Um, you know, and I think one other thing I would applaud the, uh, you know, the governor on. Uh, you know, for the most part, he's done a very nice job of giving some notice, you know, giving, you know, and I'm not going to say eight days of planning was, was a wealth. Uh, but looking at what other states did, I mean, there were some that basically said, hey, in two, three days have this going. Uh, and I think they just spun their wheels and, and started off down a path. They weren't even close to being prepared to do well. Uh, and so I, I expect he'll make a decision. I'd like to think it'd be, you know, April 23rd or 24th, that Thursday and Friday about, hey, what's happening in May? So, uh, and I know they're working on, I know they're studying the numbers and it's, uh, you know, it, it's, it's an unprecedented time with, with that type of statistical analysis as well.
Mike, I have one question, uh, in regards to the, I know we've only been online for a week and a day. Um, do we have any numbers as far as number of students participating or a percent of students that, um, are participating with the distance learning? Um, do we have some gaps? Are we figuring out how we're going to close that gap? Can you address that a little bit?
Probably not very well. I, I checked into that last Tuesday and Wednesday. I was just going to smile at Nancy. Um, because I know the answer to all of those is yes, but I don't have much in the way of details. But Nancy, what, what can you, what enlighten us, please?
Yes. Well, first of all, I just want to say, um, our staff is, and is our building principals and our tech department, I cannot tell you how hard our tech department has been working to get devices out to all kids. We're so fortunate because I had a recent conversation with the, uh, um, Alexandria Superintendent Julie Christ. And, you know, depending on your district and how much technology you have, it's a different reality, uh, very much by, uh, district. We're fortunate because of that levy passing that we have an ability to put a device in every student's hand. And so right now, um, I just want to say, cause this one blows my mind. We ran reports today looking at last week's participation. And at the middle level, there was basically, I believe the number is only 11, 11 kids who did not, uh, who had not access, access Canvas last week. So only 11 kids that were still trying to problem solve and figure out what's going on there. Uh, and we are literally down to like one-on-one trying to figure out kids who don't have access. Uh, Brian's is trying as hard as he can to get the MiFi's and hotspots out to families that we know do not have, uh, internet capability. Um, at the high school it was a little higher. And so, um, they were closer to a hundred students. And so I know they're working a plan to try to figure that out. And then at the elementary, it was, um, 90, I think nine, in the low 90s. Some of those kids though, are some of our center base, uh, program students that we were still kind of working through. Um, you know, uh, they are working on more print materials than on, uh, access. So we're still kind of working through that, but I think we feel like we got off to a good start. But we need to really fight to get every kid either online or with materials in hands so that they can continue to maintain and grow during this time. Uh, but, uh, I feel like we're off to a good start and we just got to keep working it till we have an answer on every single student.
Thanks, Nancy.
Yes. Thank you.
Any further questions on this topic before we move on? All right. Let's move on to seven point four, which is the consideration to approve the compensation plan for advisors, directors and coaches. Mike?
Yeah, I'm going to shift to, uh, you know, and this is sometimes happens to me, you know, six, seven times a day. You go from, you know, some things that are really positive. And then the next minute it's, uh, kind of the, uh, kind of cold reality, uh, hits you, hits you in the face. And the next two items are, are some of that where we, we have a reality that we have to deal with. It's through no, uh, it's through no, you know, fault or anything we've done. It's just, it's, uh, it's in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'm going to share some background information that will kind of, uh, uh, set the, set the groundwork or set the stage, maybe I should say for both seven point four and Friday, seven point five. But, uh, Tim Walls, when, when, you know, he, uh, he gave an executive order to close schools on March 18th. Uh, that impacted how we provided services. And that's what we were just talking about. Uh, it also significantly impacted our school funding, uh, and it created, you know, a different system. And part of that system, uh, everything's just fine. And what we call Fund One or the general fund, uh, the governor's order stipulated that, uh, the state would provide full funding as though we, you know, as though we were in regular operation through the end of the fiscal year. In other words, through June 30th. The executive order also stipulated in Fund One, that public school districts should pay all the employees paid out of Fund One the way they had been paid prior to March 18th. Uh, and that that was, you know, uh, part of the response to COVID-19. Now unfortunately, and this is a significant, unfortunately, um, there are a couple of other areas in our budget that are reliant in, in, in a large part on fees and other discretionary revenue. Uh, those are community ed, food service and, and student activities. Uh, in our district, we have, we have seen a decrease or a loss in fee-based and discretionary revenue. If we count March 18th through the end of the school year, uh, our estimate is that that is well over $800,000 less revenue. Um, we've been working, you know, I've been working with other superintendents. I've been working with AMSD, MASA. Uh, I've sent letters to Representative Tabkey and Senator Pratt. Uh, a group of us superintendents in the area have sent letters to the commissioner of Ed, uh, and to the governor, just trying to make sure that they understand, uh, that this is a significant, I would say a, a huge problem for districts that we, we don't have 800, over $800,000 in revenue that we were counting on to provide services. And when we say provide services, uh, that means we're paying people. And, you know, so the hard reality is there's no longer the fee-based and discretionary revenue stream coming into the district to continue to pay for programs. They're not in full operation. And so, item seven point four, uh, is a plan that, uh, we, we've created and, uh, put in place to, uh, to provide partial compensation to our coaches, uh, and activity directors, or sorry, our advisors and our directors. Um, should the seasons resume and, and run to their conclusion, uh, all the high school folks, the coaches, advisors and directors then would receive the remainder of their pay and be fully compensated. But if those seasons continue, you know, they're all shut down currently. And if they're not resumed, uh, then we've got that, you know, it's an attachment in seven point four that shows that. that shows that compensation plan to do partial payment. You know, and again, these are folks, they're hardworking folks, they're committed, they're dedicated. But we do calculate the typical, how we calculate stipends in those areas is typically done in season, even though there's a lot of out of season work. And then that, like I said, that cold, hard reality is we depend on fees and other discretionary revenues to come up with that. And so we've, we've put a partial compensation plan in place. I would ask that the school board approve that, you know, and on behalf of the Personnel Committee and our administrative team. And I'd be happy to answer questions on seven point four, and then I'll share some more things on seven point five.
Yeah, thanks. Go ahead, Joe.
What are other districts around us doing, Prior Lakes, Inka, Udino, Minnetoka? Are they doing something similar or do you not know?
Joe, the, the responses from districts range from no pay or very little pay. You know, in other words, if you held a week's worth of practice, you're paid for a week to partial compensation plans similar to ours. Prior Lakes is similar to ours. Ours is a little bit stronger than theirs. And some are currently planning, at least, you know, in kind of the early stages to do full compensation. And then, whatever you want to call it, total transparency or whatever, these are those situations where, to be quite frank, if we had a $10 million fund balance, we would have different options. I think in, in light of where we are as a district and the financial challenges, it's tough for us, you know, I don't think we can be fiscally prudent and cover the, you know, the loss in, in fees and discretionary revenues. I don't think we're, we're in a position where our fund balance can absorb, you know, the entire over $800,000 in terms of lost fees, so.
Right. Can't disagree with those facts.
Well, this is anecdotal, but comparing what our district does to a neighboring district is like comparing my house to my neighbor's house or my car to my neighbor's car. It's, it's an economic equation. And exactly to your point, Mike, if we had had it in the budget, it'd be a different conversation. I think the plan is laid out, seems equitable and fair relative to the climate. And I think the district is being very generous.
Now, is this something that, you know, since the regular, I don't want to say the regular work schedule, but, you know, coaches that have been there year after year after year could apply for unemployment for that loss of income? Or is that not a possibility?
We're not sure. And we've studied it a little bit, but we've been spending our time looking at, at other parts that impact seven point five when it comes to unemployment insurance in the Federal Cares Act. Unemployment insurance in Minnesota is partially, you know, it's shifted. It's morphed from what it was and it is part response. It's in large part, it's a response to the COVID-19 pandemic. So they've made it easier to qualify. They've allowed things that would have been, you know, ruled out, you know, even two months ago. You know, things like reduction in hours and stuff. So I don't know the answer for sure. I don't know if the, you know, if the reduction in, in pay or the loss of pay is enough to qualify. And we've had, it's, believe it or not, it's tough to get an actual person on the line there. So we've, we've taken to posing situations more like employees who would be in some of the, the work groups we're taking a look at in item seven point five and, and trying to go through and, and get a mockup of, does it work the way we, does it work the way we think it does? So it's a long way of saying I don't know.
Okay, fair enough.
And Mike, please correct me if I'm wrong. This is the funding that we had to pay even this amount, that came from savings in other areas, correct?
Yeah, well, we, yeah, it's, it's there, we have it. It's, you know, there are certain pieces in a budget. I would say it's a budgeted amount. You know, and, and yes, there's savings of about, assuming we don't run at all in the season. We spend about $70,000 on transportation and we spend, you know, another, you know, 10, 15,000 on umpires and officials and some of those type of things. And so, yes, it's, it's coming out of a budgeted amount. And in essence, you know, we do, we do pay some part of that programming out of Fund One. And so I, I think it's, it's also kind of in fairness, saying that that would be the budgeted amount.
Okay, yeah, and I have had the gift of feedback on this from several community members. And first of all, I just want to say it's great that, that we have coaches who are so well respected and revered in this community that so many people contacted me. I don't know if they contacted the other members of the committee or the board. But I, I've had several calls and emails and IMs and texts, just wanting to go to bat for, for their coach, right? And, and it's great to see that, right? If, if there weren't that level of support, we'd have a different issue. I think this is the right solution because it's basically, I think, as Joe, Tim, everybody has said, it's what we can afford to do, right? We can't spend money we don't have. But by doing it on the sliding scale, it's recognizing that a lot of work was done preseason, whether it's sports, whether it's the play, whether it's, you know, all of those things. There was a lot of work that was done up until this point, right? And it was, it was done in good faith. I really hope, Paul, that what you asked about can come true. If people can claim unemployment for this, I don't know. As an HR professional, kind of embarrassed that I haven't done research on that recently to, to find out. But I mean, it's, it's a hit for, for these coaches budgets, right? They had, they had an expectation of, of this was going to be my earnings, right? And, and for them to not get 100% of that is just unfortunate. And, you know, it's something that sadly, we have to add to the list to blame COVID-19 for. It's not, you know, there's, there's no enemy here other than the world situation we're in right now.
I've had some communication as well. And like you were saying, Matt, the, it's very obvious how much our community supports the coaches and advisors. And they talked about how their students have been touched by these coaches. And I think most of us grown adults can look back on some advisor or coach that was very important to us. And then even in light of the fact that coaches and advisors spend time before and after their season, we just can't spend money we don't have. It would be unconscionable. It wouldn't be fair to any of our employees, much less our community.
No, I, I, I agree totally with that. Yeah, and I'm just really feeling sorry for the seniors that are going to miss out on their last play, their last concert, their last season. And that, that to me is the real unfortunate part or injustice, if you will.
Yeah, you, you and me both, Paul. And there's a weird irony, and I don't think we shared it with you as the board. But last week, you know, the Minnesota State High School League reached out and found a superintendent who had been a former varsity coach for, I think, 13 and 14 years. And I'm talking about myself, talk about what it was like dealing with COVID-19 pandemic. So certainly a, a group that I empathize with and identify with and certainly have, have nothing but good things to say about how committed our coaches, advisors and directors are.
Yeah, I would, Paul, absolutely echo what you were saying, right? I mean, I, even though my high school athletic career ended in a game that was over within a minute of kickoff, you know, I still remember walking off the field that last time with my fellow seniors and with my teammates and, and whatnot. And for this senior class, whether it's athletic, whether it's, you know, the kids who aren't going to get to go to a, be in a play or whatnot, to, to not have that experience is just something you can't replace. So hopes and prayers that for some miracle, we're able to get this back on. But I, as we said, it's, it's slim, slim chances right now.
Yeah, and I echo everything that everyone else has said up to this point. I, it's an unfortunate situation that we're in, whether it's Shakopee Public Schools or a company, small business. Everyone's in a really tough spot right now. And, and I think, you know, as Mike said, if we had a, a large amount of money in our reserve that we could try to help out and, and pay as many people as we possibly could with what they were owed, I'd be all for it. But yes, you know, like I echo everything else that was said about, we, we just can't do it right now. And it's unfortunate, but we have wonderful coaches in this district. This is nothing against any one of those coaches. This is an economic reality that we're all facing in one fashion or another. And I would hope that the, the people that I also heard from, I would hope that everyone would realize the situation that we're in. When this is not a decision that was made for any particular coach or a sport. This is across the board. And as much as, as I love sports and participated in sports, when I was in high school, I would love to pay these people. But yet I also look at the other side of the fence and, and think, you know, do you pay people for a job that they're not doing? You know, would a company be doing with paying their employees for, for not working? And the reality is, is that they're not. And I don't mean that to sound harsh, but I, that's just the reality of the way things are right now. So I appreciate the effort that Mike and, and the team has gone through. I know this is not an easy decision, but I think that the solution that you came up with was very generous in the situation that we're in. So are there any further discussions on this topic?
I'd just like to make a motion that we pass this.
Okay, we have a motion by Paul.
I'll second it.
Joe second. Any further discussion before we take a roll call vote?
The only thing I got to say is unfortunately, you know, facts over feelings. And that's kind of how it has to be.
Well spoken.
Sarah, could you take the roll call, please?
Aldridge?
Yes.
Ropie?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Tomzik?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
M Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. We got to our last agenda item of seven point five, which is a consideration to approve the district response plan.
Yep.
And Mike?
Thank, thank you. I'm going to continue on with, you know, it, like I said, it tied in. I laid out some of, you know, set the stage. You know, that our fee based, you know, our, our two major fee based services are community education, which is Fund Four, and food service, which is Fund Two. And I do want to point out that, you know, in, in the, kind of the, the swirl of activity that began really on Sunday, March 15th, and then, you know, continued, there were a lot of unknowns and we've worked hard to try to sort these things out. We have, we have continued to pay our employees that are, are paid out of Fund Two and Fund Four for their typical hours of work, even if that actual amount of work has fallen below the level they had been working prior to March 18th. So they've received their normal paychecks, March 27th, April 10th. And the, and we'll receive their, their normal check on April 24th. Now, as I said, you know, before, state funding in, in these areas does not, you know, there, there is no additional funding to cover the revenue shortfalls in these fee based programs. And again, it's a, it's that hard reality. And so due to the significant loss of this revenue, particularly impacting community education and food service, we're preparing a plan or a series of plans to reduce the hours of employees working in these two areas beginning April 28th. This evening, what, what I'm asking, you know, or asking consideration to approve is the initiation of that. And the timing is set up such that, you know, the, the first day of action would be April 28th. And that is timed on purpose. We have a school board meeting on April 27th, the evening before, kind of holding out hope that maybe something will change before then. The state might fill part of that fee based gap, although I'm not very hopeful on that. Or that perhaps the governor will announce we're returning to offering school on May 5th or shortly thereafter. If, if that were to happen, it gives us an opportunity to rescind the plan. The other thing that, that I want to mention that, you know, as of today, we, we have not taken any action. We've not furloughed or we've not reduced any employees in Fund Two or Fund Four. The earliest we're going to implement such action is April 28th. But in light of, you know, that, that significant over $800,000 hit to the, the fees, the fee based revenues in, in these programs. Human Resources, myself, our district leadership team, we've been working today with the direct supervisors of, of employees paid from Funds Two and Four. Not all of them, and that's where this even gets, gets more complex because we have a, a variety of bargaining groups. And some of these folks are continuing to provide services. And I would, you know, note, CFC is, is running online preschool and they're running online ECFE and PACE and other programs. So they're going to continue to work and, and their work was able to be transferred to a, to a distance learning or an online format to some degree. But others just can't, you know, you can't continue to operate the programs when we're, we're not allowed to use the buildings, we're not allowed to run the programs. And some of the, a lot of the programming cannot be shifted to online. So we worked with supervisors. They, they begun communicating directly with the individuals who would be impacted on April 28th. They began doing that today. They'll continue doing, doing that tomorrow. And then we also, like I mentioned, there's a variety of collective bargaining groups and different contractual things. Some of them have two business weeks in terms of notice and things like that before taking action. And so the plan would be that we will have, you know, we're, we're well on the way in that planning, but we're, we're trying to do things right. We're trying to communicate personally with people who, who, who would potentially be impacted or are likely to be impacted on April 28th directly. And we will have information then on all the specifics at that April 27th board meeting. Again, unless things were to, were to happen to change. And so again, on, on, you know, on behalf of the administration and the Personnel Committee, I would ask that you approve the initiation of that. And we're planning to send those two week notices out tomorrow so that we're, we're taking care of all the, the legal requirements and the like.
Okay, Mike, are we talking about furloughing or putting them on furlough where we're paying their benefits still, they're just not getting their salary?
Yes.
Or are we talking about a layoff?
We're talking about a furlough and we believe that's the right thing to do. You know, and again, this is taking advantage of some of the, you know, part of unemployment insurance is different in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And, you know, part of it is that you can qualify for a reduction in hours. And so some of the employees, you know, in some of the groups, you, you just, you have to operate via seniority. So our hands are kind of tied and how that works doesn't really allow you to be creative. It doesn't allow you to do, you know, kind of partial reductions of, of all. So in those, it's you take X number of people, you fully employ them. And then in our case, we will reduce their hours to zero. But we will pay whatever we're, whatever we're legally allowed to pay in terms of health and the district portion of health insurance and other benefits based on their, their previous level of employment. And then we believe that they'll, they'll be very successful in, in gathering unemployment insurance, which would pay approximately 50% of their weekly wages. And then for many of them, they believe, I believe they would qualify for the, what's called the Federal Cares Act, C A R E S, which if you qualify for unemployment insurance in a state, and Minnesota was one of the first states to access this and get it up and running, you qualify for an additional $600 payment. Part of that stimulus, part of that response, trying to, to, you know, prop up and support our economy in, in the face of this pandemic. Other groups where we're, we're not restricted by the collective bargaining. Other groups where we're, we're not restricted by the collective bargaining agreement per se or, or those type of work agreements. You know, in, in one area in particular, the plan right now would be to reduce, everybody works over 32 hours a week in the group that we're looking at there. We would reduce each of them to 10 hours per week. We feel there's enough work that that's about the appropriate amount of actual work that, that they're, you know, would be doing from that time period. And again, that's, that's, you know, we've done this, you know, ordinarily, this is the kind of planning you want to put, you know, two, three months in. And then we're also trying to hit a moving set of rules. I mean, unemployment insurance rules have changed. You know, Matt, you said you, you hadn't checked into them. Well, they've changed in the last two, three weeks too. And so trying to appr, you know, apprise ourselves of those rules, trying to clarify with that Federal CARES Act and trying to be as humane as, as we possibly can is all rolled into that. So it'll be a longer answer than you wanted.
I know we had a, quite a robust conversation as part of the Personnel Committee meeting where, where Mike and, and Bill and Keith, you know, Bill Minazzi and Keith Gray walked us through and, and what gave me some level of comfort with this was what Mike just outlined, right? And the amount of work that was done in taking care of our people, whether it's through them doing their job partially, if not wholly, but have, you know, taking advantage of the supports available, whether they be state or federal unemployment and other things, so that we don't have your significant loss of wages for a significant amount of time. That all of these recommendations, all the components of this really are geared towards keeping as many people whole or close to whole as possible. I think in some cases, some people will actually make exactly what they make. Or Mike, was there even some cases where some people might make more? I know that'd be a really rare circumstance, but.
Well, that's, yeah, and I, I'm not, I, I'm not going to guarantee anything, but on paper, because some of that CARES Act is really meant to be financial stimulus and keep the economy going and, and some of that, that, that is just a blanket $600 check. My understanding is if you qualify for even a dollar of unemployment and insurance in a state, that trips that, means you automatically qualify for that for a period of time. And that's brand new. And again, I'm, I'm not an expert in these things. I've learned more about it than I ever thought I would know over the last couple of weeks. But that's where we've got our HR team digging in and trying to make absolutely sure that what we think we know is accurate. You know, and I'll give one other example, because I, I think it's a positive outcome for the group that I'll, I'll name the group. You know, we were trying to figure out and it didn't, you know, what, what would happen with, we have a number of paraprofessionals who work at Central Family and they do great work. But again, we've shifted most of that to distance learning. And we looked at it and we've looked at it from all angles. And if you'd have asked me 48 hours, I, I don't think I saw a path forward other than some, you know, furloughs or reductions there. And, uh, well, we've worked with, a little bit with Ed Zemet today in operations. And, and we said, you know what? I think there's a, I think there's a way forward here with that group. And it is that no matter what the governor says, we think we have a plan. Now hopefully he doesn't pick, pick a halfway opening date or do, do something different. But if he closes schools, I think, you know, it would still be an essential service to move CFC to Pearson. So if he, let's say on April 24th, he says, yep, I'm going to close schools for the rest of the year, we will immediately, you know, we'll, we'll figure out a way to have physical distancing, have that group work safely. They have great knowledge of CFC, the rooms, the programs, the equipment, the materials. They would be great at packing that up and, and helping with that move and, and sort of adding them as a workforce with our custodial team. And if the governor says, hey, you're opening up on, you know, May 5th, great, then that group can help us get back into CFC and get things running. So we, we believe that was a better path forward than, than doing some type of furlough or reductions. And so we're really trying to, to, to really look at all angles and involve the people who, who work in these areas and ask, you know, for assistance. And, and like I said, I think we're, we're well on our way to, to having that plan and, and executing it. And we're talking to people and, you know, and, and again, trying to be as humane as, as we possibly can be to each person.
Is there any other discussion on this topic of the district response plan?
Um, yeah, and I don't know if we have an answer to this question or not, but with everything going on with the pandemic now, they said that unemployment benefits can go on longer. You know, God forbid if we're still in this situation, two years from now, would the unemployment be extended that far? I, you know, hope it doesn't take that long, but. Do, do we know of any yes or no on that?
We really don't. Our planning has been, you know, primarily March 18th to June 5th, and then somewhat June 5th through June 30th. You know, keeping in mind the numbers, you know, we talked about the loss of fee-based revenues for, you know, community ed, food service and activities being over 800,000. That's calculated to June 5th. And, and kind of assuming that community ed will be back online and summer lunch programs will be serving targeted services and E S Y. And I hope they are. But no, I, in my mind, I've started to do some of that, but not, not through the lens of, you know, right now, it's really, you know, trying to treat our employees fairly through the remainder of this year as best we can. And we'll know so much more the middle of June or the middle of July, prepping for, for next school year and beyond. And, uh, yeah, there, there may, you know, I, I have no idea what the future holds. And, uh, you know, so we're, we're doing the best we can to kind of deal in the immediate, but yet, you know, far enough, far enough forward that, that we feel like we're making good decisions.
Mike, I have a question in regards to, are there programs from a community ed standpoint that if they move online, that those individuals will then stay with the district and will, will not be furloughed? For example, driver's ed classroom. I know that a lot of those have been postponed, but I've heard also now that a lot of waivers have been issued for those to be held as a distance learning type of class?
Yeah, I'm gonna, well, I'll answer driver's ed specifically. Driver's ed tends to be casual employees who work when we have a course to offer. So that one where we've got the waiver now and the plan is to run that online is my understanding. And that is actually the group that we would probably, community ed, you know, would be, many of them, we would roll back to that 10 hours per week. Because there are, you know, approximately, we're hopeful maybe a quarter of activities could shift online. I think people are looking, you know, for certain activities and things to do. I just saw Scott County Library, I think, had an art packet that you could pick up. And so I think there's certain things that we can do in regards to that and they can continue to do planning and preparation for the future. But, um, you know, but a lot of the employees that, that typically, you know, that, it's our full-time staff plans that organizes it, advertises it, does the, you know, sets up the sign-ups and the payment and all that. And then, or, you know, takes care of things. But we often bring in, you know, casual or hourly employees who just work when there's a need. So those folks, you know, they, their, their jobs tend to be kind of hit or miss normally. And now they've unfortunately been, been more missed than normal. But where we can get those back online, we'll, we'd love to do it.
And this is not just a Shakopee issue. This is school districts all across the state of Minnesota that are faced with the same situation of fee-based programs and the reduction of funding for those programs as a result of the COVID-19.
It is, and we've, you know, like I said, I, I don't know if there's an issue. I know there's issues I've talked about over a, an extended period of time, like LTFM and some of that. You know, at, at the legislative level. I don't know that there's one that I and some of the, the people closest to me, other superintendents, I don't, I can't think of one where we've expended more energy just trying to make sure people understand the situation. Because it's, again, I, you know, the governor was very clear about Fund One, but then Fund Two and Fund Four, you know, in, in our situation and in many, the situation in many other districts, you simply, you can't take that larger revenue hit and just shrug it off. And, uh, you know, we've seen, you know, I've seen other districts really close to us that have, you know, they've already taken the action. They've already done, you know, whether it's layoffs or furlows. And, uh, you know, I think we, we've tried to hang in there. We've tried to look at other options. We've tried to do whatever. And I, you know, I'm, unfortunately, in many ways resigned to, I think this is the, this is the reality that, that we've been dealt. And that's why I'm bringing it forward to, to this group this evening.
Well, I can go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, well, yeah.
I'll second.
I'm gonna make this. I will second it.
We have a motion by Matt and a second by Paul to approve the district response plan as presented. Is there any further discussion on this topic? Seeing none, we will have a roll call. Sarah?
Aldridge.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes.
Christensen. Christensen.
Yes.
Uh, McKeon.
Yes.
Tomzik.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
M Peterson.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item eight, which is other, I'm not sure that there is anything. Mike, do you have anything for others?
No, I, not, not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
Other, well, you know what? Sorry. Would like to thank Sarah and Brian Dros and the other folks and Ashley for, for really working behind the scenes to, to help our first teleconference meeting, so. Good, well done.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, I would also certainly agree. I'd also like to thank Sarah for helping the backdrop of our normal boardroom venue to have the rustic wood and all historical exhibits that now we haven't been able to show off for the last couple of meetings. But we all look forward to when we can get there and show off the, the museum that the, the, the boardroom has become.
Thank you. It's been, it's been a labor of love for my husband and I. Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Yes, we do.
And please make sure you share that with your husband as well.
I will, thank you.
Moving on to committee reports, item number nine on our agenda. I'm not sure we've had any committees that have met. I think most of our committee meetings, other than the personnel one that was held, I think they've all been canceled or postponed at this time. Matt, is there anything from a personnel standpoint that you would like to mention that we haven't talked about?
No, we, we covered both the topics pretty well tonight.
All right. So before we wrap up, does anyone have anything that they would like to share at this time? Liaison reports or any other notes? Mike?
One other thing, and it would be about school finances. And I, I meant to mention that earlier, that similar to that bond thing, we've in essence just put that type of planning on hold. You know, it just seems appropriate for us to focus our energies on serving our students and our community in the way we have. And at some point, you know, I think I mentioned in what I wrote to the board members, you know, those, those financial challenges haven't gone away. This evening was definitely not the time to, to talk about them.
Agreed.
Yeah, I don't think that would have been very appropriate.
All right, does anyone else have anything else that they would like to add at this time for committee reports or liaison reports? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to our item number 10, which is upcoming meetings and important dates. I'm assuming that the meetings that are listed here are going to go on as scheduled. The facilities meeting is scheduled for April 22nd at 5:00 PM. And our next board meeting, which is our business meeting, will be held on April 27th with a finance committee meeting held at 5:00 PM that evening. And then there are some other ones that are listed there as well. Is there anything else that we would like to discuss or before we adjourn tonight? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn our meeting for April 13th?
Motion.
So moved.
All right, Paul making a motion. Angela second. Any further discussion? All right, Sarah, could you do the roll call for adjournment, please?
Sure. Aldridge.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McKeon.
Yes.
Tomzik.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
M Peterson.
Yes. Our meeting has been adjourned. Thank you for participating tonight and hopefully everything went well on your end. And look forward to seeing all of you again at either a committee meeting or on the 27th. Stay healthy. Stay well.
You too. Hi, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Night.